We will call this meeting to order for August fourteenth at six P M. And could we have Councilmember Hornick, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
Understood. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. And Alinda, can we go through roll call?
That's Member Hornick.
Here.
That's Member Sanchez.
Here.
It's Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Silva.
Here.
And do we need to do anything about with him participating remote? Do we have to read anything to the record?
No, it's all there.
Okay, perfect. Sure. Uh, looks like any public comment at this time on items not agendized? And anyone online?
No, sir.
Great.
No reordering of the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, is there any reordering of the agenda tonight?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, no reordering of the agenda. However, I will note that the staff contact for item number seven will be myself.
Gotcha. Okay. Moving right along, we'll move to consent calendar. Tonight, we have items minutes, uh, the items as minutes of July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, City Council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, monthly treasures report, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, acceptance of public trail and pedestrian access easements for village senior apartments, and acceptance of bid and award of construction contract for the W W T P groundwater monitoring wells project. Are any items looking to be pulled for discussion or do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A second? I will second.
Okay. Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Bye.
Great. Move on to presentations tonight.
No presentations?
So we'll move on to public hearings. Item six, ordinance number twenty five dash oh six, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bulton, California, amending chapter three dot two eight dot oh six oh of the Bulton Municipal Code pertaining to registration requirements of hotel operators subject to transient occupancy tax and adding chapter nineteen dash oh six, oh six dash two nine oh of the Bulton Municipal Code pertaining to the operation of hotels for short term rental use only twenty five dash Z O A dash zero one. Introduction and first reading and our staff contact tonight is City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, as the city council is aware, the, uh, the city has been engaged in efforts to redevelop, uh, and revitalize the Avenue of Flags, uh, for over fifty years. In twenty seventeen, a specific plan was adopted for that, uh, purpose, which envisioned the redevelopment of many properties along Avenue of Flags. One of the major hindrances to redevelopment of those properties, uh, was the, um, the establishment over time, over many years, actually, of long term residencies within the, um, historic motels along the Avenue of Flags. Um, it was really, it really became apparent when I arrived here in twenty nineteen that we had an issue when the state had made a determination that these long term residencies within motel units like this that had become, um, something referred to as a single room occupancy or S R O, uh, had become, uh, in the eyes of the state, housing units and therefore could not be removed, uh, without replacement of those units. Um, this posed a significant problem for home, or excuse me, not homeowners, for property owners of these motels in that even if they were to want to redevelop their properties into, um, uh, something more modern or invest in their property significantly, it could become cost prohibitive because the replacement costs of those, um, units that would need to be removed, um, would be excessively high. Uh, we do have one motel here on the, on the, um, on the avenue that, um, has been required through its entitlements to build replacement units, and those replacement units have been included within the entitlements, but the remainder have not. Um, in twenty twenty, early to mid twenty twenty, um, a, uh, an affordable housing developer came to the city with a request for, for a, a proposal for an affordable housing project. There were a number of issues with that project and some discussion as to whether or not it should fall under S B thirty five. Um, but, uh, we came to an agreement with regard to that project that we would assist them in the, um, in the, uh, eventual occupancy of those units by, uh, supporting a, um, a survey that was to be done of the motel residents along the Avenue of Flags to determine the number of households that were there, the unit mix, uh, of, uh, that would be needed in order to accommodate the residents that were currently living on, on the avenue. The project eventually came forward. The city, uh, furthered its, um, participation in that particular project with the, uh, use of our affordable housing in lieu funds and the amount of approximately three hundred and forty thousand dollars that were given by the city, uh, to that development, which was the Polo Village Apartments, uh, for the purpose of, um, of providing affordable housing units. And we were targeting at that time motel residents to be included within the first occupants of that project. When the project was actually developed, we actually had fourteen resident or fourteen, um, family units move from the motel units on the Avenue of Flags into the Polo Village Apartments. Um, the ordinance that's before you this evening is an effort to, to finalize the approach here to remove the housing unit status from those motel units, to force the, the motel ownership back into short term rental status so that we have the ability to either have, um, uh, short term rentals on the avenue, which would allow and incentivize reinvestment in those properties, or would allow and incentivize redevelopment of those properties into something more viable for the property owner. We've removed, uh, the requirement for replacement housing from those units by virtue of our participation in the, in the, uh, Polo Village project. And we have two more affordable projects coming online, um, where we are working actively toward making sure that any, uh, not just our motel residents, but any other residents in substandard housing within the, uh, the city are, um, uh, able to apply and move into those units. The ordinance before you this evening does essentially two things. First of all, it requires that long term, um, residents within projects that were developed, uh, as motels be reverted back to short term units and that T O T tax be collected and paid based upon those short term rentals. Um, um, that's kind of the long and short of it. There is a zoning component and there is a, a taxing and regulation component that, that deals with our, uh, T O T. Uh, because there is a zoning component, this was brought to our planning commission. The planning commission took a look at this and essentially said, this sounds great, but we want to expand, um, the, uh, the possibilities for those residents who may not be able to find housing within the two remaining, um, affordable housing developments that are coming down the road, uh, that being the, uh, Cabrillo Development and the Bulton Garden Apartments developments. Um, so the ordinance, as it's written, as it was originally written and brought to the planning commission, required, um, that, um, residents of the motel, long term residents of the motel, um, or that the units of the motels be converted to short term residency by the end of this year. Extensions could be granted for individual units in the event that there was, uh, documentation that showed that they were prequalified for moving into one of the affordable housing units that are coming in the city. Um, the, um, planning commission took a look at that and said, well, we know there are other affordable housing units in other jurisdictions around the city. And so they've, uh, recommended that the ordinance be changed to reflect that, um, extensions be granted for any, uh, you, any residents who have documentation that they're prequalified for entry into any affordable or any project surrounding the city. Uh, those extensions, um, can be granted to a date no later than June thirtieth of twenty twenty six. So the, um, ordinance has been changed to reflect that fact. Uh, that's the draft ordinance, uh, before you. Um, as always, it's a little more complicated than what I've described, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this. Um, uh, but at this point, I'll conclude my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Uh, before we move into council questions, which we, uh, we have two, um, public comments here, so we can get those. So first up, we have Kerry Moriarty.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, I'm the owner of the Farmhouse Motel, which is probably the only property really affected by this proposal. Okay, when you look at the avenue and I sent letters to everybody on the City Council, uh, there's really only three, uh, motel properties on the avenue that this, you know, is, is addressing. Uh, I know the property owners know the properties very well. Uh, for some reason, the Red Rose Court is exempt. I don't know what the calculus for that was, but, uh, and also the San Marcos Motel, talked to the owner there. He rents maybe three or four, uh, on a long term basis. So, you know, when you get down to it, this ordinance really just affects my property. Now, I've op, I've operated this property for twenty years. I bought it. It was an apartment complex, had, had been an apartment complex, oh, probably for ten years prior to my purchasing. And it's always been used as an apartment building. Uh, I've got a, a mortgage on that property that was underwritten as an apartment building. If it goes back to a motel, guess what happens to that mortgage? I'm in default. Uh, I don't know how the city is even considering this, also based on the, uh, state mandate to preserve affordable housing. Uh, my property is exactly what the state mandate is trying to preserve. Not only that, my property serves as transitionary housing. So I've got a couple of folks here. One is Guy, uh, has been with us for about eight years. I've got fourteen years. I've got several, uh, small groups or families that have been there for over fifteen years. Uh, this is their home. Uh, I'm, I'm all for, you know, if they want to go to the Polo Village. In fact, five of our residents have gone to the Polo Village. Fine, I had no problem with that. But I, I think to eliminate a great resource for housing, an additional resource for housing for the, for the city would, would be an abomination. We need that. It's a, it's a community benefit, uh, transition housing. People get a divorce, they have health problems, financial problems. They can come to the farmhouse, three, six months to a year, a couple of years, get out of their situation. Uh, people that, uh, try to get into, uh, my understanding is on Polo Village, they don't accept single applicants. They also look at their credit. A lot of our, uh, occupants, residents have credit problems. They can't qualify. So our property is ideal. Uh, we look at it as a community benefit for the City of Bulton, and it would be a shame to lose that benefit in terms of, does this, does this new proposal, uh, um, incentivize redevelopment on the avenue? I don't get that, you know? What, what's restricting, uh, redevelopment on the avenue is high interest rates, high construction costs. And to be frank, I think our specific plan regulations are a little too tight. We, that's a story for another day. I, I'm planning on bringing forward a new project for the feed store property at five forty five, which would be a mixed use twenty four units and renovating that existing nine thousand square foot, what we call the feed store. And that'll be the second redevelopment project I've been involved in. If anybody were to obtain a exemption, it should be me. I'm the only one that's built anything on the avenue, and I call it fifty years, but who knows, thirty, forty, fifty years. I'm the only one that's done that. And it's been a very successful project. So, you know, I'm vested, I own property. Uh, I don't see where this is going to incentivize redevelopment. It's only going to hurt me financially. The costs to convert to a motel are astronomical. We don't need any more hotels, motels here right now. We need affordable housing. And so I don't think that by changing that's going to do us any good. Okay? That's my piece there.
Thank you very much. The next up, we have Chris Gui, Gui, Guelen, Gillen?
Good, good try. G N.
G N, thank you very much.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Chris G N. I'm a partner at Brownstein High Harbor Shrek. Yesterday, my office submitted a pretty detailed letter explaining all of the various reasons why this ordinance is troublesome from a policy and a legal perspective. I don't mean to reiterate every single one of those points that's in that letter, but I do want to highlight a few very concerning aspects of this ordinance. Um, under the twenty fifteen housing element that the city adopted, there was an obligation that the city evaluate an amnesty program for long term rentals and motels. And under its current housing element, it expanded upon that program, uh, stating that the city will identify and secure housing for displaced S R O tenants if there is a gap between what, when S R O units are lost and new very low income units are available. The ordinance makes no mention of an amnesty program, and the staff report to the planning commission on this matter acknowledges that only fourteen families from the forty one units that will be impacted by this ordinance have been relocated. Despite the ordinance requiring all existing residents in these units to vacate by a date certain, as, uh, the city managers have just explained. The city has also failed to demonstrate that the proposed replacement units have the size or affordability requirements to comply with replacement requirements under state law. These are all very concerning aspects of the ordinance. On top of that, the draft ordinance constitutes a, a down zone and clear violation of state housing law. The ordinance modifies zoning in a manner that eliminates residential units as these units are considered by the city zoning code, and furthermore targets, uh, S R Os, which are explicitly called out in state law as required protection. The city's proposed action also subverts the farmhouse owners, Mr. Moriarty's constitutional rights, and I'll explain that. The city's housing element identifies four motels on Avenue of Flags that contain long term rentals, four eighty Avenue of Flags, Farmhouse Motel, San Marcos Motel, and Red Rose Court. Four eighty of Avenue of Flags is already planned for demolition, and the twenty one long term rentals in Red Rose Court are exempted from this ordinance. That leaves Farmhouse Motel and San Marcos Motel. San Marcos Motel in the housing element is identified as having two long term rentals, whereas Farmhouse has twenty. In other words, the city is for all intents and purposes singling out the Farmhouse Motel and Mr. Moriarty for enforcement of this ordinance. This is arbitrary, given this, the staff report and the city to, as far as we understand, has identified no reason why the Farmhouse Motel is different in any way than the Red Rose Court. And, and, and there is no justification for treating it differently. I'll conclude with this. The state has adopted numerous laws to protect against the exact action that the city, city is proposing to take today. That is displacing low income, long term residents from their homes without securing adequate replacement housing and upzoning other property to account for the decrease in residential units. There is good reason the states pass these laws as the city's action will likely lead to housing burdens or homelessness of several of these individuals. Such results should be avoided at all costs. And for that reason, I respectfully request you refuse to pass this ordinance today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone online? Um, we'll bring it back to council for questions and comments with the staff. Um, I guess if we'd like to pause at this moment, I don't know if Mr. Murphy would like to speak with us at all about what with our attorney at all.
Sure. Um, I have had a chance to begin looking at the letter, um, uh, that, uh, the Brownstein firm submitted. Uh, and I would say this, um, uh, any ordinance for adoption takes two readings. Uh, if it's the pleasure of the council to begin that process tonight by having a first reading, um, and, uh, the introduction and first reading and scheduling the second reading for your first meeting in September, um, I would use the intervening four weeks to look more deeply into this. And if I felt that were necessary to address any of the points, I could do it at that time. Um, but I don't see any reason for the council to, uh, base a decision to move forward or not tonight on, uh, legal concerns because we can certainly address those before adoption if they need to be addressed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to staff or council questions at this time. Councilmember Hornick, any questions for staff?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor Silva. Uh, do we have, uh, an amnesty program that was mentioned? I heard something mentioned of that, um, amnesty program for long term occupants of?
We, we don't have an amnesty program as it's, as it's, um, we, we don't call it an amnesty program. The program that we've had has been, um, the development of this program, um, over the past several years.
Yeah.
And, uh, notification of the property owners along the way.
Yeah. So, so can we speak to that a little bit? So there has been outreach to speak to the property owners about this potential change coming?
Correct.
Okay, and when do we start that process?
Um, I actually started, um, that process in twenty twenty two in verbal communication. The first written communication came when I started drafting the ordinance back in October of last year.
Okay.
I notified, uh, motels along the avenue of this upcoming change, um, advised them that I would send them a draft and notify them when the first hearing took place. I did that in June, um, and then subsequently, uh, advised the owners and submitted the revised draft at that time to the owners, uh, middle of last week.
Okay.
For this, for this hearing.
Um, is there, uh, I saw in the staff report information about people helping people and, um, San Barbara County Housing Authority kind of reaching out and, and trying to talk to tenants of these, uh, hotel motels about getting in line for the new affordable units? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so do you know how long that has been going on?
Well, that took place in early February of this year. It was, it was a relatively short period of time. There are limits to how much, um, uh, to how the city cannot mandate that a developer give priority to local residents and a, uh, developer cannot outwardly give priority to local residents in most cases for affordable housing.
Right.
What was done was an effort was made to ensure that those on the avenue who, who might qualify to, um, uh, to be picked up as a resident in the Polo Village had an opportunity to see, to, to discuss their, uh, eligibility and to file an application so that when applications were received, they were early in line.
Okay. Okay, and, um, you said there is a sort of grace period? If this ordinance is passed, is a grace period to, to find other housing in the area up to a year? Is that what you said?
Uh, up, up, up to six months from the deadline. The, the deadline for conversion of the units to short term rentals would be the end of this year, uh, December thirty first of this year. And then extensions to that could be granted for those, um, residents of those unit, of the individual units within the motels in the event that they were prequalified for an upcoming, uh, project.
Yeah.
And that extension could not, um, you know, obviously they're, they're prequalified, they would be And that extension could not, um, you know, obviously they're, they're pre-qualified. They would be waiting for um, uh, the development of that project to take place or waiting for an opening to occur in another project. There are a number of projects throughout the county. Um, and in San Luis Obispo County potentially that might, might qualify for this. Um, extensions could be granted if they were on that qualification list um, for up to six months beyond the, the date of uh, December thirty-first.
Okay, so they have six months if this is adopted from the second reading to get on a list, and if they are on a list, they get another six months grace period, is that right?
No.
No?
Well, they have from, they would have from the time the ordinance is adopted until December thirty-first to find them to get, to get on that list or find new housing. And if they were to do that, then they would be, have six months that they could be on that list, uh, waiting for housing to open.
They hoping for this, but I would like to see when it gets.
So we have a full formal process for handling written comments. So what we're going to do is we will finish up council questions. And then if you could please fill out a slip at this time and get that to the city clerk, and then we will handle that. But this is going out of, out of turn of that, so I recognize that, but yeah, okay, okay. But if you could please fill out a form and get that to our city clerk, and we'll handle that. So if there's anyone else who's looking to do that, but we will wrap up council questions at this time, so you can have that time to get to your, your statement made.
And we don't have to speak to this today, if this is going to pass, we go to second reading of the ordinance. Um, if that happens in between now and then, unless you want to speak to it now, I would ask if, if there is some sort of difference we've heard about the similarities between Red Rose Court and the farmhouse, and why Red Rose might be exempted.
Red Rose Court was um, the reason we have an exemption has to do with the State Department of Housing and Community Development's desire to ensure that SROs are allowed under our um, general plan, our housing element, and our zoning ordinance. And that we don't turn around and take action to remove all the SROs from the city, because some cities will, or have in the past, said, yes, they're allowed, but we're going to, you know, remove them all. So what we did was we allowed them in a particular zone, and then we identified um, Red Rose Court as the project where we would allow SROs to remain. Um, uh, there were a couple of factors that went into that. Uh, um, Mr. Moriarty is correct. They are, they are relatively similar in terms of size. They're relatively similar in terms of use. Red Rose Court um, has been relatively stable, but it's also designated as a historic landmark within the city. And so it was, um, it was felt that we would be less, less likely to see that disrupted um, by leaving it there. The um, that, that could have been a hurdle with HCD. We talked to them through our housing element certification project. We explained the process to them. We explained our rationale, and um, they certified our housing element with that in mind, so that's.
Okay, thank you.
Would we like to pause maybe and just have our two, two people who wanted to do public comment? Would you like to, we have three minutes available for you if you'd like to do this at this time, miss or sir? Okay, so if you'd like to. So we have, um, it will be three minutes for you, sir? So we have three minutes? Um, yeah, so we have three minutes, and it's just so you know, it's, it's not a Q and A, so we aren't able to answer any questions directly, but you're welcome to say whatever you'd like for the next three minutes for you.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, uh, I've been at the the motel apartments, the farmhouse apartments for fourteen years. I became disabled fifteen years ago, and that was one place I could find that I could afford. I live in apartment number one, the handicapped apartments, where I have a walk-in shower, handrails, everything I need. Uh, Carrie keeps the place up very nice, and uh, uh, I've been in the valley since nineteen sixty-two. I know there's a lot of development going on. But after, you know, I know it's been an apartment for at least twenty years. And uh, there is a to tell us all to relocate and just get out. It just doesn't seem right. And uh, I just, I really can't understand it. Uh, the place is clean, and nobody caused any trouble. Uh, Carrie keeps the place up real nice. And I just don't understand. There was, got so many homeless out there. And like you said, relocate here, but Polo Village, I checked into that, you know? Yeah, I'm a single male. I'm not a vet, and I'm not a family. And to take our, our home away from us, for whatever reason, I just don't understand. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. For you, miss, did you want to speak? Ma'am?
Yeah. First of all, you're not very familiar with affordable housing. You have to be on a list for many years. It isn't a relocation process that is so simple as you guys would think it is. John, your son lived there in the facility, did he not? Hi, John, and hi, Alicia. But no, it's not easy for these people to relocate, and it's a list, and it takes years to be, to get approved for it. So by telling them that they have six months to move, you can clearly see him. He's not, you know, we're a community where we live. We're a community. We've lived there. Carrie's owned that place for several years. People know each other. There are families. There are children. It's a, it's a community. And it's not okay to think that it's acceptable to make more wineries and breweries. You know, I know you guys need to profit money off the city of Buellton, but this isn't the right way to do it. And this, this, he's been there for years. This gentleman has lived there for fifteen years. Some people have lived there for twenty-six years. So um, they're not here today, but I am here on their behalf. I've only lived there for five years during COVID. But Carrie does keep very good care of the property, and he does care about each and every one of his tenants. And um, if the Red Rose Court got accepted, I don't know, I, I can't imagine why he wouldn't, because a lot of those units are apartments. And if you, if you walk into any one of them, you'll see how nicely they're taken care of. They're not like, you know, we're not the hoodlum, you know, we're not, it's a very good community. We're all family. We're all friends. We all look out for one another. We, you know, and like I said, Carrie is very good at taking care of the property. We have a problem, we call him, he takes care of it. So to displace us, this is another gentleman that lives in our property, young man that just came from work, but um, it's just, it's, I, I, I can't see why, you know what I mean? You guys have the whole avenue. Just I don't really see a reason why all of us, those twenty-five units at our place.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Horn, did you have any further questions you wanted to ask?
Uh, I don't at the moment.
All right, you're all set.
Me? Yeah, yeah, no, I don't at the moment. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, um, for the attorney, um, you've got this, this appeal or the legal letter. And um, you haven't, you haven't checked it yet, or you haven't gone over it yet?
I, I've been able to start checking it, sir, and I want to delve into some of the finer points that are raised. So, uh, as I said, don't let the legal uh, dictate what you do tonight. Because an ordinance takes two readings, and no action that you take tonight would be final, you still will have to come back. So I am going to look into it, and I will be advising the council um, uh, kind of point by point going through it, uh, which is, we're just not able to do tonight in open session.
And then um, the other question, Carrie Moriarty said he had a loan for um, an apartment or ever, and he would need to get, or insurance for a hotel. But I have two different things. One is his uh, his mortgage, and the other is, he said, his insurance. So if it, if his insurance doubled because of this action, I don't know what, would we have any legal uh, ramifications from that?
I don't believe so, no. The, the insurance would be based on the use of the motel. Um, as city manager said, the motels were uh, converted without permits uh, to longer-term stays. Um, this is merely converting back uh, to the intended use. Um, so no, there, that the, the change in insurance or, or change in a loan would not, um, I believe, raise legal liability, although uh, the loan issue was not raised before tonight, so that will be added to the list of things we're looking into.
If, if he had got a, a loan at a certain rate, and then he's, he goes to refinance something, and it's a different rate, then would that, could that also be a liability of the city?
Uh, that would not be, sir.
Okay. Um, and then um, my other question was about the amnesty. Uh, was the landmark status is what changed that?
No, that didn't. That's not what changed it. That was just one of the factors that was, was uh, kind of distinguishing for the Red, Red Rose Court um, as opposed to any of the other motels on the avenue.
The, what did, what did the amnesty come from?
The, the amnesty language came from a settlement agreement, I believe, um, from uh, year two thousand or two thousand two um, that uh, the city entered into when it was sued because of some previous affordable housing violations, let's call them. Um, and um, it's we, we don't have any program in our, in our current system here that uh, that we identify as an amnesty program. But um, we do have, you know, we have a number of provisions within our zoning ordinance that address how affordable housing is to be uh, encouraged within the city, how affordable housing is to be, um, is to be maintained throughout the city. And um, you know, what, what we, what we've wound up with here is a, a situation where we've got essentially conflicting policy. Um, we've got a policy of the city that says, yes, we are going to encourage, uh, promote, maintain affordable housing, but we've got a conflicting policy in that we've got a um, a specific plan with a revitalization program for the Avenue of Flags that identifies the need to uh, have property owners reinvest and revitalize or redevelop their properties. Uh, this uh, ordinance process before you is simply a, a tool to enable that to take place.
Okay, well, thank you.
I have a pedicure question on that that's related.
Sure.
So in the ordinance, it says, um, whereas several hotels and motels within the city currently rent rooms on a long-term, greater-than-thirty-day basis as single-room occupancies, SROs, which is contrary to the provisions of the Buellton Municipal Code.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so which, which provisions has been contrary to the code, and for how long has it been?
Well, the conversion of those from the mo, from the original motels to the short, the single-room occupancies is, is contrary to provisions of the municipal code. Single-room occupancies are permitted, but the conversions which took place over many years and many years ago, those were contrary to the provisions of the municipal code. The, the allowance for the single-room occupancy units actually is, if I'm not mistaken, were just codified this year as a result of the changes that were approved by HCD through our housing element.
Okay, okay, okay.
And I, I would add, sir, that the, the settlement agreement, which is memorialized in the affordable housing sections of the code, recognizes that those conversions were unpermitted conversions and still requires certain uh, relocation and replacement aid for tenants. But even going that far back, nothing um, uh, between the housing advocates who brought the suit and the city's attorneys, uh, nothing ever changed the nature of the conversions to legalize those conversions. They were always deemed unpermitted conversions contrary to the code. They were just allowed to stay while we worked through certain processes because we had to have replacements available.
Okay, so these, these single-room occupancies that we're talking about are unpermitted contrary to municipal code conversions that occurred years ago?
Correct.
Okay, and this, this ordinance, when it's adopted the second time, will change what exactly?
If the ordinance is adopted by December thirty-first of this year,
Yeah.
all units of motels, hotels and motels in the city will be required to rent only for short-term periods, less than thirty days. With the exceptions being granted to those individual tenants who have pre-qualifications for uh, locations for, for projects to move into.
Okay.
Can I clarify something for you, Mr. Sanchez?
Are there specific timelines that we're trying to meet? With having, with having this ordinance be adopted right now with the December thirty-first date, are there specific timelines the city is trying to meet in passing the ordinance at this juncture?
There are not specific timelines. Um, we've, you know, originally, the plan was to bring this ordinance before the council earlier this year. As you're aware, things have happened that have caused things to shift, and so this time has, has been brought, and we were originally, I was originally looking at a timeframe probably closer to this time period, or maybe a little later in September, when uh, when that deadline would take place. It's been slid back because it's taken that long to get us here. Uh, the city council can place whatever dates it would like on this ordinance if it chooses to adopt it at all.
I just have an issue with the December.
Okay.
The December date.
There's no.
With holidays and families and all of that, the date doesn't, even regardless of whether we do it or not, the date is, is something that I'm just.
Absolutely. That can be, you can change that to whatever date you'd like, if you'd like to do that.
And then, sorry, are you?
I was asking for the, yeah, just.
One more, okay. So when you say that these are unpermitted conversions, my concern is regarding the unpermitted, like, does that mean that the standards in which that the, the um, units are kept do not meet the standards for, like, an apartment, someone living in it? Like, or is it safe occupancy in that respect?
When we refer to the unpermitted conversions, we're referring not to, not necessarily to um, building and safety-related issues. So um, there, there's not um, an implication here that, that there, there are, there are hazardous conditions that people are living in. When we refer to unpermitted conversions, we're referring to conversions that took place contrary to our zoning code.
Okay, thank you. No, that was it.
I have another question. Sorry.
Mr. Sanchez.
Um, I was, it's maybe for the legal, uh, my son rented a room over there. And uh, he was there for six, nine months or something. He was in the same kind of transitory position that other people are in. But I don't know if that would, uh, if I need to recuse myself.
I mean.
No, sir, you're just fine.
Okay.
But thank you for asking. I appreciate it.
Okay, and then I thought I heard Mr. Mary already with another question.
We aren't really doing Q and A in this stance, stance at this point, so I would encourage if there's any further communications that they outdo any outreach afterwards. We've opened up for the two who wanted to make public comment at this point, but we, we aren't really here to do back-and-forth discussion.
Well, thank you.
My questions I had was, one being, um, in terms of outreach to the, the land, or that, that there's, you know, you communicate, was there any requirement by law for um, notification towards any of the tenants about these changes?
We, we notified um, our, our, our legal public notice, because this is a city-wide ordinance, was done through publication in the newspaper.
Mm-hmm.
And it was done through, um, that, that's our legal notice. The requirements for, or the um, notification of the individual property owners was done as a courtesy to the property owners to let them know this was happening. But no, we don't have, you know, information at this point that would be current as to how many, if any, units were um, affected within any individual motel. So we sent them to all of them to include the, the new motel uh, or the newly refurbished motel, Hotel Huga, because we just don't know if there are any long-term residents there or not.
So because these are not sanctioned permiss, but we don't, we don't know who's living on the avenue, so we don't know who to mail it to. So it became, basically, we would notify the property, and then it would be upon the property owners to notify these changes to the tenants at their discretion, so.
And then we had outreach, uh, separate outreach when, when units were coming online.
Yes. So in that situation, it was that we notified the property owners. It would be up to them to notify the tenants about these things pending, if they wanted to.
Yeah, there's, there's no requirement.
The city partner, I know I partnered with the PHP with knocking on doors out there, so then it was the outreach of handing out applications if available.
Right.
But by the nature of us not having mailing addresses, because these are not city-sanctioned residencies, we don't have a means of communicating with tenants. Okay, so we exhausted that which we know how to do, right? Okay.
That's correct.
Um, secondly, um, was just a question about, in, in terms of, to kind of advise Mayor Lewis, if we were to extend out deadlines or things like this with. In, in terms of, to kind of a Vice Mayor Lewis, if we were to extend out deadlines or things like this with the ordinance. Does that, would it be that if we extend out the timeline of the? Basically, if we extend out the one that was December thirty first, then there's this six thirty one, which would then we'd slide everything to that type of thing, is that? Is a six-month window, that was per the planning commission's discretion?
We, yes, we, we originally wrote in a six-month um. Extension date, but we limited it to projects within Buellton. Planning Commission pointed out, well, there are other projects around that, that. The residents may wind up being qualified for and moving into. And if that's the case, there's no reason to not, uh, not allow that. So we, you know, the, the um. But again, the city council can set whatever dates it wants and whatever time periods it would like.
I guess I was just, I was trying to think in practice, it's like if the, if the requirement is documentation of being on a list for it, but we don't know which. I, I guess, how, how would, how would we handle that? Like, would it be that they would submit it to the, the property owner and the property owner would need to submit to us, or I?
What, what, if, if. If they are working toward, um, if they are pre-qualified, let's say they um apply for residency at um. Uh Polo Village as an example, it's newly filled, but you know, turnover happens on occasion. And let's say they were pre-qualified, that doesn't mean they're necessarily going to get a unit there, that just means they are pre-qualified. So that if a unit opens up, they could be called and asked to move in. That would be justification enough for um. City staff to issue that extension under the ordinance as it's written right now, up to a period of six months. Um, and council can set its, its parameters however you'd like. Uh, the object was, again. The, we're, we're not here trying to push people out onto the street, we are, we are though needing to push um. Uh, the message that. There is a deadline to the conversion of this, if that's the direction the council wants to go, and that it is incumbent on the residents there and the, the owners to seek out. New forms of residence if, if they're not going to be able to live here.
So in theory, we could provide for the resources, we'd have to, for this outreach portion, we would have to, we could provide. The resources to get to tenants through the property owners again, because we don't know which ones are occupied.
Right.
Of getting on to lists, of getting their name through the portals, the centralized central. Coordinated entry, coordinated entry, coordinated entry system and things like that, so those would be available to that, so we'd notify the property owners and then it would be on them to get it to the tenants again. Unless we were to do another outreach program, kind of above and beyond what the city needed to do at that time.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions before we move to discussion? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so moving to discussion, I would like to. I see no issue with approving the first read because it doesn't make anything set in stone, it just allows us to move forward if that is the way that we're going without a delay. But I do want city council to address the legal merits of the letter we've received. And I also want to take a look at the date requirements because I think December is an inhumane month to ask people to, you know. Up and move, I just, I.
I was kind of mapping out, like, if you did a January thirty first, that'd be a July thirty first, or if you did a February twenty eighth, that'd be an August thirty first kind of extension with it, so. I was thinking that, yes, I agree that, I don't think that putting any kind of requirement with a December date is a good plan for anything.
Well, let me ask a couple of questions about that, so uh. I don't think we can change the second reading of the ordinance, right? We have, we pick dates, you gotta pick dates and do the second reading at the same time.
That's right, you, you would want to read everything into the record tonight, uh, and then the second reading would be as is. If we come back at a second reading and we make substantive changes, that actually becomes then the first reading of the revised.
So we need to revise.
And I want to speak to that, so um, to echo City Manager Scott Wolf's uh sentiments, I don't think the intent here is to kick anybody out. Uh, I would note that we do have uh. Polo Village open, which is roughly fifty units, and I think that we have Garden Apartments is scheduled to open July twenty twenty six.
I'm, yeah, first, first or second quarter of twenty twenty six is what they're.
Eighty-nine units, right, so that's a hundred and forty odd.
And we have Cabrillo that'll open in October.
With applications, Cabrillo is starting to take applications tomorrow at nine AM. They can get on to that.
Cabrillo is starting to take applications tomorrow at nine AM.
Village, the Village Homes, and those ones are with, under the Housing First Program, which does not require credit checks, does take single occupancies. And has options for A M I for affordable housing prices.
So we need, I think, I think it's fair to say we recognize that this is the direction of Avenue Flags and the specific plan, but. Uh, I think we can make accommodations for timelines to allow people to sort of get on list and get where they need to go. Uh, so I guess the question for me then becomes, when would that be most accommodated? Like, is it, you know, do we, do we kick the? First, do we extend the timeline to have a grace period to a year? Do we have, wait to have our first reading for another six months or something, or what, what do we want?
I would like to at least accommodate the end of the deadline to when the. I'm gonna, what is?
Garden apartments.
When the garden apartment is opening, so if they're opening in July, then the deadline for us should be. You know, synced to that, I think it would make sense because if we are. If we are stating that these properties are the replacement properties to have a deadline prior to when the replacement properties are ready, it doesn't. Quite make sense, so um.
So would, would you in um? Section nineteen.
Try to find it, but I would like.
Yeah, so it's, it's um page, page two of the ordinance, page forty-eight of the PDF. Page, page forty-eight of the PDF.
I don't see dates, and I was looking at that, oh. On section three, you mean?
Uh, section three, chap nineteen oh six two nine oh, um, it sounds like what you guys are looking at is revert to uh in. Sub A, revert to hotel uses no later than, and would you want August one, two thousand twenty seven? Twenty seven, or twenty six, I apologize.
Uh, so I, in kind of doing some quick math here, I, I was just thinking, there's a, a piece where if you did it. If we were to be as, like aggressively generous, or not, but like aggressively extended out as much as I'm trying to think here. If you did March thirty first as the required conversion over, unless you're on a list, that's a six-month notice from roughly when we're talking adoption, and if you did that, that'd be six months, if you got onto a list, that's not September thirtieth. And so that would, we were more than accommodating to the idea that Garden Apartments should be open by the end of September, correct, for delays?
Yeah, that's, they're targeting summer, so I, you know, it's always hard to say.
But that would give room, if they were on the list and pre-qualified for them, they could stay there until it was open, even if it was a slight, a slight.
I was just thinking, and that kind of works out in my mind, it's like that's six months for the first requirement. And then it's a year after, right, right now, because by the time you're reading this ordinance for second reading, that's in September. And it'd be one year from that reading, so you're giving a, a six-month window for getting on to a list, and then twelve months once on the list, and that. Kind of at least gives, so we'd be saying a March thirty first is when it needs to be switched over.
So in section, sorry, I'm trying to follow.
No, no, and I'm trying to follow too, but you said twelve months while on the list, is that right? Or six months?
So it would be, it would be immediately, I, I think. I think what we're looking at is revert to hotel uses no later than April, instead of January one, twenty twenty six, it would be April one, twenty twenty six. Uh, in subsection A, that's when the reversion has to happen and we get rid of, or within ninety days of the effective date of this ordinance, whichever is later. Uh, and then in subsection B, um, to be occupied by, instead of June thirtieth. Twenty twenty six, we would move that to uh October one, twenty twenty six.
And then that's six months from the time of, six, it's basically six months from second reading. And for the conversion and one year from the reading. Or if you get on to a list, I, I, I mean, let's say, like, if you go through the process and get on to a list, that gives you a full year.
Well, so my question though is, uh, do we know when Garden Apartments, Garden Apartments are opening?
So the, usually, so like, or it depends on each one, but like Polo Village took the applications in February. And they opened in end of May, beginning of June, so if you didn't, like Cabrillo is opening tomorrow, yeah, so if you open in. Cabrillo's opening tomorrow, you would think they'd start filling in November, so it's usually like a three to four month window. So basically, in this scenario, assuming that Buellton Garden Apartments comes online, let's say, August first, you would think the list would open in March or April, but that's speculating.
Yeah, it, it could open, yeah, about, about. I, I might even say April and May.
April, yeah, so you would assume a spring list would be the idea when you'd open a list, when you're expecting to, now if they, they open sooner, then the list would open sooner, but.
Um, oh, my only concern there is, right, like, I want to give people time, right? I don't want them to be sitting there being like, uh, you know, the list hasn't opened yet, I'm really waiting because I'm boxed out of the other one, so. I, I would like there to be some buffer there for them and, and not, I didn't write down the dates that you were mentioning, so I just want to make sure we're incorporating some.
Right, yeah.
I, I might suggest, rather than trying to target a specific um. Specific project. That if, if the goal here is to, is, is to set out six months from, say, the second reading. For the initial conversion and then extensions to be granted in certain circumstances for an additional six months, rather than targeting individual projects. Maybe we can uh tie this to registry with uh. Has Barco with the Santa Barbara County Housing Authority on their waiting list, if they can provide documentation that they're on Has Barco's waiting list. Then we could grant an extension for up to six months now. There may or may not be projects opening in that period, but at least they would have that additional six-month period to find housing.
According to entry.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what they call it, yeah, it could be, there's different.
So if, if we need to do all this, if we want to make these changes, which are perfectly fine, then um you would not have a first reading tonight. Because you'd be making some substantive changes that we would need to bring back the text of for you. And that's okay, it's up to you.
I think I'm confused. We would be able to still count this as a first reading if we just changed the January date to the March date and the. June date to the, I think you said.
October one, and that's because those are very straightforward changes, um, and I would read them into the record. If we're getting into potential other pre-qualifications that we probably need to look at to make sure that those can be done and what, what that really means. Then really, to be able to rewrite that, we're not going to be able to do that on the record tonight, so we would want to come back.
Concerned with getting that far in the weeds. With each, so that, that, if we do more than just changing those two dates, that would give the year. Then we're saying that our city staff needs to meet with every single tenant, figure out where they are, track where everything is. That is a significant increase in workload to track every tenant where they are, make sure they're on the list, not on the list, did they get in, did they not? Versus a straightforward date, am I understanding that properly?
Well, it's a little, it's a little simpler than that potentially, because what, what would happen is, as of. Whatever date you said, at this point, it could be April first, um, then. The, the residents or, or the, the individual units are required to convert to short-term rentals, and the following month, they would need to submit. T O T reports and, you know, collection of T O T. The um, property owner. Is going to know which units are not going to convert in advance, they would come to us and then let us know which property, which units those are. And then we would go and, and reach out to um. The uh individual units and have them tell us what their situation is, and if they would qualify, we could give them an extension for that six-month period.
I think that unfortunately, we're dealing with a situation where I, I wish that. I think if we do a six-month and one-year, and we do our due diligence of notifying the, the land, the, the, the property owners about this, it's an easier thing to work from. It takes in consideration a timing situation for it. It is unfortunate that residents have not been informed about this sooner from the notice that was given. But I think that at least for our side, it's like if we say six months to, six months and one year, I don't, I think that that's about, as, as far beyond that, then I think that we're getting into like, now it turns out like eighteen months, and it, it's, it's like, I think we have to remember that the. Their purpose is to get this into compliance and get this into.
And the six-month and one-year period would. With, with not even worrying about the reporting could make sense, I mean, it, it puts the onus on the property owner to determine which, which. Individual units have been converted to long-term rentals and which ones haven't. And um, you know, there, there could be, you know, some reporting requirement that, that I'm, I'm sure. That our, our T O T system would be able to pick that up, um, and then after a year, we would just require them all, so.
So you're in favor of changing it to?
I, I think it could be, it could be more simple if we did the April and October, and you know, i- if we're not having to worry about verifying pre-qualification. It's, the onus is on the property owner to say, okay, these units have converted to short-term rental. And um, and the rest of them are on notice, you've got six months, and, and then the rest of them will convert to.
So at this point, it would be the documentation would be that if they're on a short-term rental, it would, it would be an exemption for providing T O T on those units. So really, at this point, it's just, this, it's just if the property owner wants exemption from T O T, they would want, they would want to provide documentation to show that they're on a list waiting to get on to one of us.
We wouldn't even necessarily have to pro, provide that list, um, it, what, what, what? I think the bigger concern here is that when um. Once that conversion state starts to take place, we not see re-rental of units to more long-term tenants after that initial deadline has happened. And so maybe we require the um, you know, the property owner to submit lease documentation for all of the exempt uh units. And, and, and then we know when the lease was entered into, and we know that, okay, there's an end date, and we're not dealing with. A new lease that was entered into three months after the deadline, I mean, it, it's. It's um, it's entirely up to the council, I, I'd love to keep it as simple as possible for both the city and the property owners, um, that would be ideal. It, it, it's just a matter of, you know, how quickly and, and um, what approach you want to take.
I think in April one and October one is a, a, an easier date for me to be able to provide people time to get their affairs in order, figure out where to, to move with that, and gives us some time to also. Work with the affordable housing projects that are coming in for outreach and getting people connected in with those resources, since. That would be a better space for everyone long-term.
Yeah, I would agree.
So you're, you're talking about changing uh page forty-eight, section thirty.
So small A, instead of January one, twenty twenty six, it'll be April one. Section B will be October one, twenty twenty six, um, and then as you move on to page forty-nine, again, it's October one, twenty twenty six, not June thirty. And sub C will fill in the month of April, twenty twenty six, in the bracketed text.
So I would like to make that motion that way. How do I, what do I need to say to motion it that way and make it still be the first read?
Sure, uh, so you would like to move to adopt ordinance or move to introduce. Uh, and hold the first reading of ordinance number twenty-five oh six as amended on the record this evening.
Yes, that, please.
I'll second that.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
No.
And Mayor Silva.
Hi. All right.
And we will go do our homework and get back to you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, we will move on now to council member comments and items, and we'll wait, give a moment for everyone if they'd like to access, we'll give a quick pause here. All right. At this time, we'll go for council member comments and items, we'll start with council member Hornick.
So just briefly, I want to thank city staff for putting up with uh my and Prince de Maria complaints about frontier and developments going on there. Uh, thank you to City Manager Scott Wolf and Rose Hess for um quickly trying to respond to uh lack of notice and um destruction of sidewalks. And uh taping them off so that things could be secure and safe for the kids and people who play there, um, so thank you for that. Um, I would hope that we got a little more notice from the subcontractors there, but um, such is life. Uh, I also wanted to bring up, um, I know I spoke to this a couple of times before, but um, in uh the um. Along Sycamore and potentially Valley Dairy, uh, we should probably talk about traffic calming measures. Along those two streets, and I wanted to sort of bring that back to council member discussion at some point, if we wanted to. Have staff look into what we could do about traffic calming measures and, and put it on the agenda for public uh discussion. I don't know if I need to elaborate anymore, but that was going to be my comment.
Sorry, so it's.
I would agree with that.
Just to confirm, so it's, it's specifically to discuss traffic calming measures just for those two streets?
Yes, those two streets, the concern is that uh with the library, children's museum, Hundred Hills, and the park down below, uh, people tend to speed or accelerate aggressively. Uh, and we have kids and people, families in that. Uh people tend to speed or accelerate aggressively, uh and we have kids and people, families in that neighborhood, and I just want to make sure that. Uh we're aware and mitigating any uh traffic concerns that we can.
Start, is it possible to start, and I don't know if they already do, but for our traffic officer to. Look at those streets and and sort of target streets, is that a thing without?
It it is, and from time to time, we will call if we're having a particular issue in an area, we can um. We we can place our speed trailer, which we've done on Sycamore on a number of occasions. I think it's even been on Valley Dairy for a while. Uh but we can ask our motor officer to uh spend a little time and target those locations in particular. Right now, they're kind of focusing on the schools the first week, um as well as uh the general focus on Highway two forty six. But yes, we can have them branch out a little bit and.
I think if we spread them sporadically on some of the side streets that are are more of a problem like that, like Second Street, those types of things. People getting tickets on those streets will make them think more than a speed trailer, that's just.
And I think we're starting to get into substantive discussion, so I think this probably would be a good one to bring back. Um so that you can have those discussions about personnel versus um physical environment.
And just to confirm, there's there's it's Sycamore, Valley Dairy, and then there's a third one that's impacted, I believe. There's three streets, right?
It depends on how you are approaching that space. Valley Dairy and Dairyland, I think.
That's.
But. Yes, I if we're gonna be doing speeds, I think we should just, I think staff should look at it and bring it back so we can discuss it because I'm not sure that. Uh Dairyland, the the third one, the last one over uh would see increased speeders, but.
I would just say that.
I know that Sycamore now.
We'll we'll look at the entire section of the neighborhood.
So that we don't, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I would, I would say agenda wise, um traffic calming in the area of the Willamston property will probably cover everything.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. We're all good with that?
Uh, one thing about that, so people do approach from Long Oak and enter farthest street.
River, River, uh Riverview Road.
Riverview Road. And so my my concern is not, you know, I want to look at all of it, right? Because right now I know people.
We'll we'll take it all the way Riverview. We'll 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 look at that entire neighborhood.
Great. Uh and I think that's it.
Uh Councilmember Sanchez, any comments or items?
Yeah, um to continue with that subject, uh can we talk about lowering the speed limit on those streets?
We we will make that something that we bring back as part of the discussion, sir.
Alright, yeah, I just wanted that included in your um in your studies. Um I just wanted to to share something with you. There was a a group down at the park. It's a triumph. There there are a uh a mobility, um mobility impaired people. They had bikes that you pedal with your hands and that, and so they had a a big uh, a big uh thing down there. Uh helping the people that can't ride bikes and and they had these neat bikes down there. I just happened to drop in on it and I ended up taking a couple laps in the. A hand pedal. Um but a bicycle, so it was fun and uh but uh it opened my eyes to a lot of things that like bumps and smoothness and the. Getting in and out um across the ways and um I just wanted um. Somebody booked that for the uh no one knows who booked that. It was uh Triumph Foundation. And uh if they come back, I I kind of told them to keep trying and and uh they were interested in coming back. So I want to thank the uh whoever put that together. And uh nothing else, thanks.
Very much. Vice Mayor Lewis.
I just wanted to take a moment to send out a thank you to all of the city staff involved in the summer camps. As well as the community groups that participate. Our kids in summer camp got to go to the museum in solving. They got to make pretzels at the. Pretzel place in solving. They got to make pizza in Saninaz. So a lot of our local businesses really got involved. And like it welcomed our kids and had them there and my daughter is pointing, we went here and we did that and we met these and it's just really cool. For our kids to do a summer program, one with staff that are awesome, the kids are happy, but locally and see things locally that they may not get to see. So I'm just, I was very impressed and I think everyone I talked to who had kids in the program love it and I just think that there. We don't give them enough credit for dealing with the uh craziness of our kids and keeping them safe and doing all the cool things they do with them over the summer. It was very cool. Yeah, they deserve a round of applause.
Um one was, I didn't know if we have, I didn't know if we had secured our second speed trailer. I know we talked about getting a second one at some point.
Um, I don't know if it's been delivered yet.
Okay.
Believe it's.
No.
Oh, has it?
That was part of our O T S grant.
Oh, yeah.
And we implement, we received it, um like, I think just before the new year and we finally got it programmed. Cut around March. So that's been implemented. We have a set rotation between. Oak Valley, Honona Middle School and the library. We each, we rotated each location every one and a half weeks. And putting it different locations around each of those three um fixtures because it's part of the grant. It's gotta be um. Bike ped safety, watch your speeds, share the road with bikes, you know, the cyclists and the pedestrians, et cetera. You're you're in the school zone. We have those different types of messaging, um as well as it reflecting. Um the local speeds as vehicles drive by and then as we've rotated them around, we've rotated also. Which direction it captures. So that's going to be in continued use.
And so that we we still, that that's our second one that we're using.
That's correct. That's the second one we have. We still have the first one and I. I don't know off top of my head where that one is at this point in time, but we've been rotating that throughout the city as well.
Well, that defeats everything because I was gonna say about since school has started up to ensure that we have that available on Second Street where all that's going on. So thank you, Rose, for just solving the problem before I even got to say it. I appreciate it. Um second item was in having conversation with the Friends of the Library. It came up about eventually one of their long term goals is to explore fundraising for a pergola outdoor space to the library. And something that's kind of though is that they don't know exactly how to fundraise for something because they don't have general concept design of what it would cost to do one. And so it was brought about if there'd be an interest in possibly having some time spent to look into some design work. So that we could have a concept of what that could look like so that the Friends of the Library could begin their fundraising efforts on on the pergola. Outdoor space addition to the library to increase that. And so I'm just curious if there might be a willingness of the council to provide staff direction to look into. What it would be to provide some low level design work for outdoor pergola so that the Friends Library can have a a concept when they go to donors like. We need to fundraise X amount of dollars. They just don't know what it would be like and they don't know where to start.
No questions about that.
I don't think we can, I guess, I, yeah, we can't talk about. So can we maybe look at agendizing it to have that further discussion? Okay, so okay, great. So we'll leave it there. Thank you. And we'll stop there. So we we got through it, everybody. Okay, we're we're rusty on council member comments tonight. Uh next up, written communications. Anything for us today, Linda?
No, sir.
But we may from.
No, not at all.
Okay. Uh committee reports. Councilmember Hornick, any committee reports?
Uh I don't have any committee reports. I I did meet with um uh a member of three C E. And um he wanted to remind everybody to get your rebates in if you have uh battery or electric vehicle rebates. Because they are ending um the end of the year and at the end of.
September.
September respectively.
Okay, anything else? Councilmember Sanchez, any committee reports?
Uh yeah, when the Arts and Culture Committee, we had a um a guest, which was the uh school's principal or superintendent. And uh uh it was a nice, it was a nice addition to the crew there and I want to thank him for coming and showing interest in that. It was, it was uh interesting and and uh he sounds like he's, he like, he he wants to get involved more in in projects. And and that was his way of doing it and I want to thank him for coming.
Vice Mayor Lewis, any committee reports?
No.
And none on my end. All right, moving along, we will move on to business item number seven, consideration of arts and culture project application, the Bulton Theater Project. And as per listed at the beginning of the meeting, our staff contact will actually be city manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um we have a um um project that the Arts and Culture Committee has made a recommendation on. But before I get into that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Murphy to explain why I'm presenting this evening instead of Allison.
So as the, as the city manager looked through the agenda and got into the attachments to this, it. Came to be found out that Allison is actually going to be a volunteer on the project. Uh she did the right thing by recusing herself at the committee. Um there is also a committee member. Who is tangentially involved in the project who also recused themselves at committee. So uh we don't really have a um. A problem here, neither of them are getting paid. There is no Political Reform Act or F P P C issue. But to avoid even the appearance of conflict, the city manager will take the item um and walk you through it so that you. You don't wind up finding out later that the person who led you through the item is actually going to be a part of the team implementing.
And just to confirm for our interaction, are we able to direct any questions to Ms. Fiery?
Yes, um she is here this evening in a private capacity, not as a staff member, but as a as a proponent of the grant. Um and she is able to answer many more questions about this than I can.
Okay.
Because um I I'm going to just give you some very brief highlights from the report. So that you're aware of what's being proposed and then you can ask questions of the expert.
We'll wait for the good part to come when you're ready to go, Ms. Fiery.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, now that that's out of the way, a mayor and council. Um the Arts and Culture Committee has met and is um sending forward for recommendation for grant funding. A project by the Bulton Theater Project. Uh the Bulton Theater Project um uh is proposing a fourteen week theater arts program. Uh which will um engage participants in uh various workshops and um. Uh different programs that will culminate in a production of Annie to be held at the Solving Theater Fest. Um this is a um, it's it's a very involved kind of a process. It's not simply we're gonna put on a play. Uh there are uh there are vocal workshops, there are dance workshops, there uh there's a children's theater workshop. The um uh a- as mentioned, uh all of these will work around the production of um. Annie, the musical at uh Solving Theater Fest. So this is a rather large um request from the Arts and Culture Committee. Uh Committee as requests go, the actual request on this particular project is uh forty eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Um the current budget um of the Arts and Culture Program has uh for the current fiscal year. Has one hundred and seventy three thousand three hundred and eighty three dollars remaining uh within it. Uh this project would reduce the uh that amount to a total of one hundred and twenty four thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars. So the Arts and Culture Committee did meet on August fifth and um did recommend that the um. Uh that the city council fund this project fully in the amount they were requesting more, which was forty eight thousand eight hundred dollars. Um there is on page uh on attachment two, which is page sixty of your packet. A breakdown of the expenditures uh to be had here of note. I will point out that um one of the um line items here has to do with sound equipment. There's a six thousand dollar line item for sound equipment. Um the benefit to the city on this one is that following the production of um. Uh for following the conclusion of this project, the six thousand dollars uh that are is going toward the purchase of new equipment. The equipment that is purchased with that will then become um come under the control of the Arts and Culture Committee moving forward. So that we have sound equipment for future projects that come forward. Um so with that, I I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but as I mentioned earlier, the real expert on this um is Allison Fiery. And she is here this evening.
So um before we bring up Ms. Fiery, is there any questions for staff that are kind of administrative before we get into the project? I have a few, but I don't know if anyone else does at this time. All right, I'll just read read off mine really quick. Um do we know how much was spent last year on arts and culture?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't. We have carryover, clearly carryover amount though.
Because it's annually, we're replenishing a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand and we're at a hundred and seventy three thousand.
So we only did about twenty seven thousand dollars.
There may have been some carryover from the prior.
Right here. Okay, okay, gotcha. And then the only other one is, and I guess this might be because she does the app, is how many pending applications we have, but that might be a.
I believe there are two more that will be coming to the city council uh sometime in October.
Okay, perfect. Okay, Ms. Fiery, would you like to come up and talk about the project?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for giving me a chance to share my heart on this proposal. Um obviously, I work at the Rec Center and part of what we do and what we get to do is invest in our community and in relationships. And I get to see these children that are coming in and really not just children, our seniors that come in all wanting a place. And all wanting to try new things and to further their skills and to invest in themselves. And that's a really wonderful part of my job there. I would like to do it on a personal level as well. Um this project was sort of born out of um my own background. When I was ten, I did a production of Annie. It was my first um theater experience and it changed my life. I had adults who poured into me who um I lived very close to Chicago. So we had the benefit of a lot of professional actors who had now become real estate agents and different things. Um and so our per- our productions were professional level at that time. And like I said, it changed the course of my life. I um prior to becoming a rec coordinator um was an equity actor. I still have a union card and would be working on a co- a separate contract for this. I did national tours. I lived in New York for a long time. I met my husband doing a production. It changed the entire course of my life. And it was because adults saw something in me as a child and poured into me and I would like to do the same for the kids in our community. And so this project would be multifaceted. It would um give a place for both chi- uh children and adult performers to get a chance to. Do further education through workshops and then also culminating in a performance. I um have spoken with uh several performers that I worked with in the past that have all done national tours and different things as well. That have a similar heart for this kind of thing, that would like to be part of the project. So it would bring in three professional actors. Um two of them were on the national tour of Annie, which I think is a really neat uh side note on this. Um and they would come in and do free workshops for the children. So not only would they be part of this um fourteen week process via Zoom. Doing workshops and things with our um cast members, but then when they came in the ten days before the performance, they would do. Uh we would have three that I have listed here, a vocal workshop led by Lloyd Alexander Holt uh Holt. And he would be talking about audition technique and performance enhancement. And we would have a Broadway dance style workshop led by Jordan Alexander Holt, um who's a professional choreographer. And then we would also have a children's theater workshop with the Bulton schoolchildren. Anyone else, all of these workshops would be free to Bulton residents and only a five dollar fee for anyone else in the valley that would want to take part. Um all of these performers have also agreed to do uh personalized training throughout the fourteen weeks. With any cast member that is interested in doing that. Which I personally have taken voice lessons with uh Mr. Holt and they are seventy five dollars an hour. So for him to do that free for any cast member for fourteen weeks is a pretty impressive, you know, a pretty generous offer there. Um I do understand that it is a a big ask, but we are also donating a ton. My husband um is a union. Um sound producer and so he is able to work at Theater Fest for free and is donating about ten thousand dollars worth of equipment. To the production. I'm gonna donate all of my time as a director and choreographer with my hoping that this spurs um future projects. And hopefully things that we can do through the Rec Center as well. And so I'm ready for any questions you might have, but I'm really excited about this and I'm hopeful that you can see the value in it.
Uh maybe we'll go with questions. Councilmember Hornick, any questions? Councilmember Sanchez, any questions?
Uh no, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis. Uh I I'll I'll come up with some just so that she came here. I'll take it all this way here. Um could you talk me through the timeline for this? I get it's a fourteen week uh production plan. What would be the timing?
Yes, sir. So we would start auditions the second week in January. Um that would probably be a Saturday audition with a Sunday callback. Everybody that's part of this production team, which is in, I believe, attachment three, would be um attending via Zoom. And then we would also have some local community members. For instance, Candace Signa is going, if this gets passed, would play Grace Farrell. And so we would have all a lot of um people on our audition panel. So that would start in January. We would start the rehearsals uh probably about a week after that. And after we get our rehearsal scripts in and we would run those rehearsals all the way through April. And the performances would be April seventeenth and eighteenth at Theater Fest.
And then how many students or children are you hoping to engage in this? Like, I guess, how much can the cast of Annie hold?
Sure, I, um the cast list is about forty people total, um about twenty five of those would be kids. And um we would probably use some of the high schoolers. This was purposely chosen a. And um, we would probably use some of the high schoolers. This was purposely chosen around uh, both the high school performance schedules so that hopefully some of those high schoolers can mentor um, the kids and that they can also do a Q and A with our um, guest artists so that they can find out about, you know, if they have any questions about a career in the arts. And luckily, we have, each of them have their own strengths, whether they're a teacher or running a theater company or choreographer. And um, I think that's a great aspect of it. And so um, it was also picked, uh, that date was also picked to go around um, the Adderley and Lights Up Theater Companies in Santa Barbara, because a lot of our local talent go to Santa Barbara to perform in those and there's no conflict. So I wanted to make it as um, easy scheduling wise for everybody involved.
And then the only final one I have is, I know that most of the time with our projects, they're meant to be like one-time funding. And this sounds like a really heavy lift. Is the intention for this to be a one-off? Or is it the hope at some point that this would be an annual thing since you're building all this infrastructure?
Um, my intention would not be to come back to you all every year, if that makes sense. I I believe that projects should rotate and that we should have an influx of things. I would hope that this would spur an interest in several different ways. I'm I'm hopeful that um the staff at the city sees value in in these kinds of things so that hopefully we can do more programming through the Rec Center with this. I um, have talked to a lot of community members that would like to see this um, maybe bring back an interest in starting a community theater here. And then Solving Theater Fest has actually talked to me about um, that they would, if this is successful, they would like to partner on bringing back a children's theater program where they would bring in professional artists to work with kids. And they had a program like that a couple of years ago and they haven't had it for several years. And um, when they heard that we were putting in this proposal, they actually approached me and said, how can we get this to happen at Solving Theater? So I think that I'm just hoping it gives legs to arts here in the community at a really high professional level.
That's all I have. Thank you very much. Oh, we don't even get to talk about it first?
I would, I like to say that I think it's awesome. I think that it it's exactly intended, the Arts and Culture Committee. Uh, also want to give shout out to Allison's shirt, which I very much appreciate and her hard work at Boulton Rec. And I think this is great for the community. I'm I'm super excited for it.
I'll second.
Perfect.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
I can't wait to see what you do and keep us in the loop on this. This is gonna be so exciting. I never leave home without them. All right, moving along, we will now move to item number eight. Uh, initiation of process for initiation of process for investigation of future use uses of city-owned property at two oh two Dairyland Road with our staff contact being City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, as you'll recall, at your July twenty fourth meeting, the county, uh, the city council approved the permitting and the licensing of property at two oh two Dairyland for a Hundred Hill School. As part of that hearing, the city council asked that this item be brought back um, so that the council could consider uh, the um, creation of a process to uh, to look into future uses of the property. Um, once the um, the license uh, agreement with Hundred Hill School terminates, uh, that could be um it could be anytime, but a maximum of five years from July twenty fourth. We um, are are open to direction that the city council may have. If uh, if you'd like, we would suggest a process that starts with a um, with a town hall kind of meeting uh, in the neighborhood, probably at the library. Um, and um, solicit community input, neighborhood input on what they would like to look at and the kind of process they would like to see. And then this would not necessarily be a process that that happens very quickly, but it would be a process that that um, where where time is taken to make sure that we we get input from the community. Um, and that uh, as as many potential avenues for use of that property as possible are investigated. So uh, again, this is um, something that is completely at the discretion of the city council. Staff is here to take direction. So I will uh, conclude my report, my report here and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, so I'm gonna start with just, before we get into discussion, it sounds like it'd be more of a discussion item. Is there any questions for staff explicitly, just questions, not really discussion at this time?
I have a question.
Question.
Um, yes. So one of the concerns of that uh, space is the three parcels in a single family zone. And because our general plan is still open to amendment, because there is concern about let's just say, a certain state department uh, seeing that and wanting it to be included in our housing element. Does legal or staff need time to evaluate what might be the best approach for uh, an appropriate use of that space? Does that make sense? If we're gonna law merge, if we're gonna do something.
Yeah, I I would say from legal, um, beginning to move forward with a process, the the legal's going to follow the ultimate direction. So the faster you start the process, the more we can start, the the faster you start the process regarding use, the faster and easier it is for legal to follow along and figure out what we need to do to allow that use to actually happen.
We will look um, as a a part of any process. Staff will look at um, options as to what the uh, what appropriate actions might be to ensure that the city's long-term intent for that prod- uh, property is made known. And what order those those should take place in, and we will come up with that in consultation with the city attorney.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I realized I didn't check. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back for discussion.
I I mean, I think it's super important to do. Um, I think that uh, yeah, we should come formulate a committee and figure it out. I do, I do think it bears saying, and I'm sure if I don't say it, somebody else will, but um, when Hundred Hills goes in there, that that chant, the Children's Museum is gonna take a couple of years to ramp up. Um, and it will be uh, one, important for those two and the library to work together. But also to see how that space is utilized uh, in knowing what an appropriate use that space will be long term. Um, so I think this is gonna be something that is going to start, but it will take time to come to full fruition.
Yeah.
Well said.
Yeah, I I think that especially, I guess, uh, Councilmember Sanchez, I know you're via Zoom and there's a delay here, so I'd give you set space to say whatever you're looking to say.
Yeah, um, I just, I think that uh, this is way too soon to to with, you know, the there hasn't even been a shovel there yet, you know? Um, and you're gonna open up uh, everybody, everybody's gonna come in with different ideas and everybody's gonna want something, but you don't even know what it's gonna be. I think that that it would be better to wait to have something there. Have some, you know, the people stomach the school being there and and that instead of deciding we're gonna start working on something right away, we don't even know how, what the reception is gonna be. I know there's a, there's a lot of people that are against this. There's a lot of people that'll, that are fighting it and they don't. And I think there's a lot of people that don't know what they're fighting yet. So I think that that to turn it into another um, another project and more discussion, I think it would be better to take the time to uh, let everybody talk about it, you know, themselves and in in a a year or more. I mean, after the school's been in there, then have a discussion about it and see what, what's gonna happen. I just think it's way too, I mean, it's, we just had the last meeting with all the list of everybody there and everybody's still um you know, still hot on it. And I I just think the team needs some time to um, cool down and have people see what's there. Instead of, you know, you're gonna get a lot of people that are real opinionated and it's not, it's hasn't even started yet. So that's my opinion. I I just like to put it off for a year, you know, to wait till there's something there, you know, instead of starting to to uh, and I I understand the legal, it has to happen and and I I don't think that needs to have uh, town halls to have the legals um, tell us, you know, what's next, you know, they're the ones reading the laws and knowing what's happening. And again, we might make something, make a decision that is gonna, something's gonna change again. So I just think that that we should give it a year to cool off and and then start talking about, we have time. And uh, making it an emergency situation, I think is just uh, unnecessary. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes, just to play devil's advocate with you, John, I think one of the big picture items that I took from the feedback, positive and negative in the situation with the the school project is that the community felt a lack of input and a lack of communication. And I think getting ahead of, because we're not talking about the school and we're not talking about whether the school is a good fit. This uh, ad hoc committee and the town halls would be designed for future planning, which as we know, nothing moves fast with the city government and it would allow people to have a space to come. And I am sure the first couple of town halls or meetings will be people still venting frustrations and that type of thing. I I fully expect it and understand it, and I think we need to be, you know, cognizant of that. But getting ahead of future projects and getting out there and being proactive in giving people the opportunity to speak and giving people the opportunity for input, I think would benefit any future project there more. Simply because there will be more of a buy-in, because people will be on board earlier. And it will also be a good show of faith on the council's part that we heard. We heard not just your suggestions, but your criticisms, and we are actively working to do what we can to change some of those processes as a direct reflection of those criticisms. So I I definitely think that I get what you're saying and I get that people are still hot and I I fully get that. But I think it may be just part and parcel for what will be better for the city and residents and how they feel about the project in the long term.
My point is, half of the discussion was misinformation. We sat and listened to people, insult people and go to sides and all that. And uh, that and we would, I think that if we have the information first, so we don't have dreamers come up with something that is impossible or, you know, that that can't be done. And then they're disappointed. I think we should know from legal and 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 planning what we're dealing with before we start, you know, we've had, we had suggestions, skate parks and, you know, a bunch of things that, you know, that fought, they fought about things and I just think it's, we don't need them to start fighting over things again. Somebody's gonna come in, want something, the other one's gonna say that isn't, you know, the homeowners, you're gonna say they don't like this. I just think it needs to cool off and we we're working on it. But at least let people see what's there first before, you know, if they fall in love with it and say, you know, some of them would be right and say, I hated it. But, you know, it 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 just says, I don't think it should have to be the next day you have to jump into more town halls. We just think we need more answers before we have more discussion. That's my point.
I I will, I would have to, in, you know, polite disagreement of this, I would just say, I, one of the biggest feedbacks we got was that some community members felt that the decision was aggressive in its timeline, that it felt rushed, that it felt like we were moving fast for the first time on some of that. And so I think that I would have a little bit of an issue to say that after a decision's made where we had received feedback that they felt like it was a rushed decision, that the time to slow down, move more cautiously and take our time is when it comes to public input. I think that public input is a good thing to allow to marinate. I think that people being able to be angry or frustrated and and getting that out there is a cathartic experience. I think that we need to allow people to know that their voices and opinions are heard. And then it is, it's not meant to be a snapshot of a decision of what people feel like is needed, it's, you know, for a six months window that we look for it. It would be great to iterate. It would be great for people to even have the space, like I can't make the first two meetings because of X, Y, Z, but I got in there. So I just think that a longer runway not only allows better participation and a more well-rounded decision, but it also gives us the ability to say that we are responding to the moment and that there is not a limit to, if we've given, been given the note by the public that more public input and more public outreach is required, we should meet that. And I think that this is a good opportunity for us to start and put our, our money where our mouth is, that we're gonna start investing in this now. So I I think it'd be a good thing to start. I think that we made kind of a commitment at this time that we were saying that it was going to be part of the community talking about what would be thereafter Hundred Hills' lease ended. And so I would not wanna wait out of the hope of it being like, well, maybe we'll have better ideas, like we, let's let the public be part of that process.
My point is, you just said you didn't wanna rush it, but you wanted me, you know, but you are rushing it. And, you know, you said you you don't want it rushed and and you wanna take time with our decision, but you want people to start. You mean, like I said, why, why are we rushing it that next week we have to go and start um, soliciting ideas when nothing's ever, nothing's happened yet?
Can I just jump in here? Um, I don't think the uh, proposal is to uh, you know, formulate the ad hoc committee and then come to a final determination, you know, after our first meeting. My first comment was, this is gonna be a lengthy process. I think it's important to have that process for the reasons that David just mentioned, and also the, you know, we signed a lease for up to five years. Uh, and and I think that what this, the city uh, and that neighborhood really want is understanding that their input will be heard and it's also that it's gonna be just five years. And and that idea is cemented with coming up with a community plan for that space after that five-year timeframe. And yes, it's not gonna be just one meeting. It's gonna be, it's gonna be extended. And I think one of the the ways I wanna direct this discussion is how the ad hoc committee is going to have constructive meetings over the span of time that will allow for the process for the Hundred Hills to actually be developed alongside the Children's Museum to get them up to speed and ha- see how those two intertwine, because you're you're right. It it could very well be that people are like, this actually is great, like this is a great addition, let's keep it. Um, and, you know, it could be that, you know, this space would be better used for overflow for the Children's Museum or whatever it might be. But I think we're gonna, we get a trial run. One of the benefits of approving it is that we get the trial run to see how it is. So I'm not, I I think I'm agreeing with you in part, John, but I am saying that it's important to start the process and I think we should start the process.
Does this require a motion?
Um, just, just consensus direction, no resolution with this, so um, just direction.
So at this point, from what it sounds like is, I would, I I guess with verbal confirmation, at least on the end. I know I would like to start this, I believe Vice Mayor Lewis would like to, like Councilmember Hornick, you would like to start this ad hoc committee. And I, Councilmember Sanchez, I'm assuming you don't, or would you like to? I just, for sake of consensus, we're looking for consensus here.
I would like to be on the ad hoc committee, so that's.
That'll be our next item for discussion.
Right.
Okay, so it sounds like we agreed to create this ad hoc committee. And now we will move to item number nine, appointment of ad hoc committee in, for investigation of future uses of city-owned property at two oh two Dairyland Road. And our staff contact will again be City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, you've just taken action to direct staff to start this process. Staff um, feels it's important for a process like this for the city council to have involvement with it. Um, and so to that end, um, I would recommend that the city council appoint an ad hoc committee for the purpose of oversight of this process at two oh two Dairyland Road. It is, um, I have thrown out a suggestion that uh, the two council members appointed to this be the District One representative, as this property is within the first district, and the mayor. But the council is free to choose whichever two council members it would like to serve on this committee if you choose to create one. And with that, my, in my reporting.
Thank you very much.
Well, we just heard that Mr. Sanchez, Councilmember Sanchez would like to be on the ad hoc committee. I think that it is imperative that this, the District One rep is is on it. That's me, uh, at least for town. Um, so that's where I am.
It was of my opinion, and I think it's not about the people, it's about the positions. I just think that since it takes place in District One and it's a a large piece, I think it makes sense for the District One rep to be involved with it. I also think that it makes sense for the mayor, since both are accountable to the voters most directly that live within the area that surrounds the area. So it surrounds Williamson. And I would say that, though it's a big community piece that goes on, but I think it's important to tie some of these discussions to be by elected officials who are directly voted into office by the people most impacted by the decisions made by the ad hoc. So it was my opinion that whether or not it's Hudson Hornick and David Silva, it's District One and the mayor makes the most sense. And regardless of who sits in those seats, I think that those seats make the most sense.
Unfortunately, I would agree with that. Unfortunately, John, I'm sorry, but I would agree with that. I would also say that the, there is an added benefit in that you Unfortunately, I would agree with that. Unfortunately, John, I'm sorry, but I would agree with that. I would also say that the, there is an added benefit in that you voted for and you voted against, so we kind of have. Two, I don't want to say opposing views, but in a way like you guys are bringing different perspectives to the group, which I think might be helpful. You know, I just think it might be helpful when you're going to there that there are different perspectives being reflected because. The three of us had the same perspective, and I think it might be perceived better by the community to have. To have.
Let's hear from you, John. What do you say?
Well, I don't think that that anybody has more sway over. The city than the other. We we all represent all the citizens, not just, even though the mayor. Resides over the whole city. We also all reside over the whole city. And the last time we had the ad hoc committee for the water rates. I was discluded and Alicia was discluded because there was an election coming up. So if that's the criteria. Then. Both of you would be. Discluded because we have elections coming up and we may have to change committee members. So. That's just my point, you know, if, and I don't. I, that's why I want to be on the committee because I've been involved with it. A lot longer. I know I was involved in this decision to buy in. I have. I mean, I, I'm the one that got blamed for buying it or somebody didn't, you know. Like, like it wasn't my idea. I was only one of the decisions, but I was in the major decision in the beginning. So it's important to me to keep it going without. Making, you know. I just want to keep it, you know, involved in it. And and the disclusion, I think, is is pretty bad. I don't like being excluded from it. It isn't just one district. It's the whole city. Alicia is the whole city. I'm the whole city. You know. The new councilman will be for the whole city and the sectioning off things like that's my territory. I just disagree with. That's my point.
I hear you. Nice question. This is for staff. So. Understanding the ad hoc committee will be spanning some time. Does it have to be the same representative every time? Right? Like, is there, if we're gonna meet, like, say it's District One and Mayor. And then the next meeting, we have. Districts, I forget y'all's districts, excuse me, but Mr. Sanchez and Ms. Lewis. Is that something so that then? We get the whole, we can get different. Districts representing the ad hoc committee, and then we wouldn't violate the Brown Act, have that happen?
So that really wouldn't be an ad hoc committee. That would be more. Community outreach. You could, you could. Seat an ad hoc committee that would sort of oversee the process. And then at various times. Without doing any decision making or coming to recommendations, you could have, say, the mayor and the council member for a district, go meet with that district about their thoughts. And then. You know, maybe just the district council member and the city manager go meet with residents of another district about their thoughts. It doesn't have to be. The same two people every time. But what those would be would be more information gathering. Ultimately, an ad hoc is gonna meet. To formulate recommendations or to take the information and go somewhere with it. And so to that extent, the ad hoc has to be just. The same two people so that they can go through the recommendation process. But certainly, as you do outreach, every council member can be involved as long as there's no more than two at any individual meeting.
Well, John, I was, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
I would make a motion to not have an ad hoc committee and to have a. So that everyone's involved and says just two people. And so. It would to not have that ad hoc committee, and that would be my motion.
Well, I guess there's a motion, so.
And we'd rotate in and and about, and it wouldn't be two people making a decision, you know, two people made the decision for the water rates and. Two people did this and that. I appreciate the ad hoc committee, but. Well, it's it's all of our cities. It's not just two people.
Well, yeah, but the, so two people from the ad hoc committee made recommendations to the rest of the council as to what water and sewer rates should be, right? I mean, and the rest of the council votes on it. That's, that would be the same thing here, right? The the two for that hot committee would meet with the members of the public and whoever else and and then. Come back with recommendations to the City Council.
What would be wrong with rotating those people then?
What would that look like? That's another question for staff.
So. There are cities where on an annual basis, they look at their standing committees, which are Brown Act. They they have to have agendas under the Brown Act because they have. Broader authority and they are, they don't have a termination date. And they look at their ad hoc committees, which have, you know, sort of a narrow purpose and there's. An expected timeframe. And on an annual basis, they look through them and the mayor makes appointments, oftentimes the same people, sometimes they change. That's not really the way it's been done here with respect to ad hocks. You do that with your other committee appointments and your appointments to other boards. If it were the will of the council, you could add this ad hoc to that list and simply look every year. Do we want to keep the same two people or do we need to make a move? That's certainly allowable. And again, as practice in other places.
So. We would, it would be a standing committee, not an ad hoc.
No, it would still be an ad hoc because it has a specific purpose and a defined timeline. Standing is something more like a. Yeah, like a city school district standing committee where they meet once or twice a year to go over ongoing issues. This is still gonna be an ad hoc, will not be a Brown Act body. But if you wanted to add it to that list that you review. Totally within your authority to do that.
You. You wanted to make a public comment? I mean, would you please fill out a form? Oh, what's that? Yeah. Say your statement and fill out the form after and then we'll.
It happens.
Yeah. They were playing fast and loose with public comment tonight. So, yeah, feel free.
I'm Elena Alvarado, live in the in the district. I really appreciate Mary Silva, your. Explanation of having the two of you on this committee, and I would support that. We, as residents of District One, we voted for our councilman. He, we voted for. Him to represent us, our interest. And I feel it's imperative that he is part of this ad hoc committee. I I totally agree that you should be on it as well as mayor. We want this. Our voices to be heard, and I think it's it's absolutely necessary to have. Him on this, and I don't think having different districts represented. Isn't really in the best interest of this particular issue. And. I don't want to talk about the water rate issue. I mean, all that, that's that's something different. This is very specific. So I feel this is important to maintain the two. As mentioned, as part of this ad hoc committee.
Thank you very much for your comment. You could just fill that out and get to to Linda, please. But I do want to just, we have the open ended thing that Councilmember Sanchez did. Make a motion, so I think we have to handle that if there's, so is there a second to Councilmember Sanchez's motion? Okay, hearing none, the motion fails at this time, so we will move on from that and.
That we. Point. District. I'm saying District One and the mayor to the ad hoc committee for the investigation of future use of city owned property at two oh two Dairyland Road.
I will second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornick.
Hi.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
No.
Okay. Very much. Moving on from that, we will now go to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember as the council, very briefly, a couple of items for you. As you're all aware, the District Four. Special election is currently underway. August twenty sixth is Election Day, so ballots need to be placed in the ballot box in front of City Hall or dropped in the mail and postmarked no later than August twenty sixth. At eight P M. We will on election night and then following election night. Update. Provide updated counts as they come into the city from the County Elections Division. Those will be posted on. The city's website and on the Buellton Engage page. We'll have a special page set up for the election where we will. Post any election related materials. Just, everyone, keep that in mind. I will also note, just as a general informational item. After you adjourn tonight, we have five more regular meetings of the City Council for this year. So we. Feels like we're kind of only about halfway through the year, but we've only got five meetings left. Those will be September eleventh, September twenty fifth. October twenty third. November thirteenth and December eleventh. So at this point, we don't have a whole lot coming down the pipeline. We're anticipating a a slower end of the year than we had at the beginning of the year. But every time I start to think that something comes and proves me wrong. So. Just for general information, that's what we're dealing with. And if you have any questions or concerns about that, please let me know. And with that.
I know.
I'll conclude my report.
Thank you very much. And now we'll move to Mr. Murphy for our city attorney and moving us into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the council will move into closed session under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one regarding one matter of existing litigation, the Central Coast Water Authority versus Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. The Superior Court case number is on the agenda for anyone who would like to read it. Thank you.
And we won't need to come back into open session afterwards, correct?
No, what we, what we do in Buellton is, following the end of closed session, I brief the city clerk via email as to what direction was given, if any. And what time we adjourned, and then that information's available to the public in the city clerk's office beginning tomorrow.
All right, we'll close out.
Councilmember Sanchez, if you'd like, when we close the Zoom meeting here, if you'd like to call on the cell phone here, I'll put you through on on speaker so you can discuss with the council.
Okay, you want to just call me?
Sure.
All right, we'll adjourn open session at seven fifty four and we'll move to closed. Thank you.